At this time, we'll open the meeting, the July 19th, 2024 meeting of the Wilson County Planning Commission. Anyone willing to give testimony before this board today? If you would, please stand and raise your right hand. I hereby affirm the testimony I give today to be the whole truth, so help me God. Say I do, please.
I do.
Thank you. We need to approve the minutes from the June 21st, 2024 meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Ash, second member, Mr. Jewell, to approve. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion will carry. Tom, one thing we want to do, if it's okay with you, I would like to move the new business portion of the nomination of officers to the end of the meeting, and I'll make that in form of a motion.
Second.
We have a second from Ms. Weathers. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That will carry, and we will start with old business, Tom.
All right. You have an item that was deferred from the agenda, January 19th, 2024, subject to floodplain requirements being satisfied. The site plan renewal for ShopSpring Storage Facility is the name of the site plan. It's map 105, parcel 51, and it's 2548 on Sparta Pike. Staff is prepared to recommend approval with the acceptance, with the condition that the letter of map provision be submitted and accepted and approved by FEMA that is required for some of the field they've placed in the floodplain.
Okay. Okay. Do we have anyone here today wishing to speak on this case?
Questions, I'm gonna give my name.
Okay. Do we have any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
So move.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Noak, subject to staff recommendations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Tom, we have a rezoning this morning?
Yes, I believe we have two of them. The application, the first one is an application that's been made by Joe and Jessica Clark and Diane Jurnell. They're requesting rezoning of their property from A1 agricultural zoning to C3 highway commercial zoning. The property's referenced is Wilson County Property Map 114, parcel 35.20, which contains 4.53 acres, and Wilson County Property Map 114, parcel 35, containing 9.43 acres. The combined acreage of the property is approximately 13.96 acres that are being requested in total for rezoning. The Wilson County Growth Plan nor the Wilson County Land Use Plan has any direction for this area to be commercial in terms of zoning designation. The properties to the south have been zoned C3 highway commercial several years ago. The property across Highway 231 south has also been rezoned from A1 to I1 zoning in 2019. The rest of the immediately adjacent parcels are zoned A1 agricultural. There are some additional parcels further south on Highway 231 that are zoned C3 highway commercial. So there may be some precedent for permitting such rezoning of property in this vicinity for commercial purposes. However, the land use plan, which now reflects the above referenced rezonings in close vicinity, had an intent of keeping new commercial developments centered around nearby busy corners whereby traffic counts approached 10,000 cars per day on the highway and 3,000 cars per day on the intersecting secondary road. It's intended for development to be zoned to neighborhood scale commercial zoning for development under zone districts such as C1 neighborhood commercial and LOC limited office commercial zoning where that busy corner provision exists. That said, the majority of nearby commercially zoned property is already zoned C3 highway commercial or I1 light industrial per direction of the planning commission and subsequent county commission approvals of such. Should the county planning commission or county commission ultimately decide to approve this request for rezoning, if any development should occur on the properties, a site plan will be required at the time the property is proposed for development under commercial zoning, and all commercial requirements including permitting, paving, landscaping, building material, and public sewer provisions would apply to the property unless variances are granted by the Board of Zoning Appeals for any of the specifically listed site plan and commercial requirements. Staff has also made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services and has been given no feedback at this time regarding the rezoning. Staff will note that the proposed rezoning falls within the limits of the Maddox Simpson WEMA stations, or Station 1's five-mile ISO response zone for fire marshal, or excuse me, for fire and emergency services. The county stormwater department has requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat marsh or steep may affect further development of these tracts of land. And as an additional point of information, this rezoning does not appear to be in close or immediate proximity to a century farm based on the information provided to the Wilson County Planning Department. With all the above stated, staff cannot recommend approval based upon the original intent outline for zoning and development within the 2006 adopted land use plan and the subsequent 2021 modified land use plan, ATLAS. With all the above stated, excuse me, staff will point out that there have been similar requests in the general area. So once more, we're pointing out that there is some precedent that the planning commission may consider and the county commission may consider that have been, the choice has been made to approve, setting a precedent for these types of requests in this area.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone here today to represent this case? Yes, ma'am, please come forward and state your name for the record.
I'm Diane Jurnell. I live at 3571 Murphy's Borough Road, Lebanon. And we have requested the rezoning because we're surrounded. And I've had many folks interested in the property. I'm a real estate agent. My neighbor's property is currently on the market, and we just need to be rezoned.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
We have anyone else wishing to speak on this property? Yes, sir.
Hey, I'm Lyndon LaFever. I'm a neighbor across the road. I've spoken with Ms. Jurnell, and I have no problem with anybody bettering themselves through the cell of their land at all, and I've made that clear to her. I also said the only thing that would be important to me, and I think it's been already approved, that the entrance and exit preferably be just out on 231, not coming out on Old Murphy's Borough Road East. And I wanted to ask for the consideration of a tree border between that and the wedding venue that we have because that is the direction that all pictures are taken for the sunset. Just wanted that to be noted.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Tom.
This is a straight rezoning request, so this is not a planned unit development. I don't really have any means of requiring that at the juncture of rezoning. I may be able to do it, or at least address it during site plan approval, and it may be good if you've reached that agreement with the applicants prior to this meeting if they stated on the record, at least for your benefit, that it doesn't really, it's not something that's enforceable by this board or the county commission, but at least it's on the record that they stated they would commit to that.
Good. Yes, Ms. Jurnell did agree to that, and I just wanted to put it on record. Thank you.
Since she's in the room, are you in concurrent?
I think I agreed to no exit on Old Murphy's Borough. But we did talk about...
Can you come up to the mic? I'm sorry. I'm sorry to ask her without your permission, Mr. Chair.
You're absolutely fine. Please.
I don't think I agreed to no exit on Old Murphy's Borough Road because that could hurt us. But I did tell Lyndon that I would do everything possible to protect the venue. He has a beautiful business back there. So that's fair to want to have a barrier, some tree scape to protect him, but I don't want to not allow an exit on to Old Murphy's Borough Road.
Again, I think that's something we'll have to deal with on a site plan, Tom.
Yes, and there is an existing driveway on at least one of the parcels already on...
The neighbors, they have an exit.
Yeah.
They use it.
Right.
We don't have it. I mean...
That's part of why I wanted it to be covered.
Well, and in fairness, I think we've had, we rezoned a piece of property right down the road from y'all a couple of years ago, and the neighbors have complained about the actual access to that road. But we can only deal with that at site plan time, ma'am. So it'll be noted, and it's part of the record.
Right. And I will point out that East Old Logardo Road is a public road, so I mean, we have to have a good reason.
Murphy's Borough Road?
I mean, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, East Old Murphy's Borough Road. I apologize. Did I say Logardo?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay.
Wrong part of the county. Is a public road, so we would have to have pretty good safety justification or something to keep, to make it a requirement at the site plan level.
Okay. Is that good with y'all, sir? Okay. Do we have anyone else we should speak on this case today? Okay. Do we have any questions from our board?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, Tom, from the Rock Quarry to the crossroads.
When you're saying crossroads, you mean Central Pike and 231?
How much A1's left in there?
Well, I probably should have turned my laser pointer on, but everything north of this rezoning request is, there's still a good bit of A1 between the Rock Quarry going north, between the Rock Quarry and here. This is I1, I believe. This right here is C3, I think. And then the, down there is C3 as well.
Down below that, you're at the county convenience trash center.
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. And a lot of the trash, the things around the convenience center are grandfathered, non-conforming uses and/or old Board of Zoning Appeals approvals. They may still be zoned A1, but they've got commercial use on them.
So, next question. The, and I guess this should be for the property, but is there already some kind of function going on in that property?
Right here?
No, right over here.
Right, right here?
The ones, two pieces we're talking about.
Okay.
All activity in there, a lot of cars, trucks in and out of there, a lot of, or something else already going on there?
It appears that there's some sort of, I don't know if there's a commercial business or not, but they do have a garage, and there were some fellas, this was not on Ms. Jurnell's property, it was on the neighbors'. There's a garage there when we went out to do our field review, and there were some cars in it being worked on. I couldn't tell you whether or not that it was a commercial operation or just their private hobby, but...
This is one of those pieces of property I'm very familiar with, and it's on a rock.
Yes, sir.
And I don't, there ain't ever gonna be no houses built there, that's for sure, I don't think. Everything around it's been changed by us, or not by all of y'all. I changed one piece while I was sitting over there, but I don't see how we can just, I know we don't have this in our land use plan, we've done stuff without that, but it's just, it's almost like one of those things, it's like common sense. You, I only know these people, and it's not referenced to me, but I don't know how we say no when everything around it, including our county landfill, is right there, our convenience center.
231 is changing commercially, just right along. I mean, it's just a progression. It's like these other corridors, like 40, 840, it's just one of them.
But I'm frustrated that Tom can't enforce what Mr. Seaver tried to do to him, Lyndon. I'm frustrated that we can't do something here. I guess we can in the site plan, maybe.
We can.
Next. So, okay.
That'll be part of the record.
Yes. The...
Zoning together.
It is, sir.
The only way you really could do it is under some sort of planned unit development concept or planned, or master plan specific zone district, and this was not submitted as such.
I mean, we'll address that when the time comes. We did make a mistake on the other one, quite frankly, under the use that they were using. They had those big hydrovac trucks pulling in and out of there, and they had no business being on Old Murphy's Borough.
Well...
Y'all don't know what's gonna come with y'all's land either, we don't.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, if you would, please come forward.
If you could come to the podium.
Again, I'm Diane Jurnell, and I live at 3571. We bought this property two and a half years ago, and personally, I thought we probably had 10 or 12 years before all the, I don't want to say garbage, but everything caught up with us. Come to my house, I invite you to come to my house. At 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, we'll sit out on the front porch. When you pull out of my driveway, you're looking at a piece of property that they auction off equipment. I mean, you can't leave the windows open because of the noise, the tractor trailers, the dump trucks, the beeping. I mean, it happens all night, all day, every day. And when I approached Tom about rezoning, I personally think we should be industrial, but I get that you guys want to see a site plan, and, I mean, again, I'm a real estate agent, so I get all that. But I don't understand how you could even remotely look at us and say no. I mean, come to my house, come sit on the porch.
Are you gonna have breakfast ready?
Am I gonna have what?
Breakfast ready.
I will. You just let me know, let me know when you're coming, and we'll have iced tea or breakfast with whatever's...
That's fair enough. Thank you.
But, I mean, it's really bad where we live.
Essentially what you're telling us, you're living in that area and you're going to leave it. You're gonna get out of it and make a commercial sale and go somewhere else. That's what...
Exactly. I mean, nobody in their right mind would buy my house to raise kids.
Understood.
You know, come and...
Just round him back.
Come and try to get out. I mean, and the hydrovac, I mean, they didn't dump sewer, but they washed out the tanks, you know? And Jessica and Joe had to sit there, and it's just unfair. And not to be ugly or argumentative, but you guys are the ones that made those decisions, and those people, the guys across the road are auctioning off equipment and bringing in dump trucks and tractor trailers and...
Yes, ma'am. I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
This is just, not for nothing, but since I've got a captive audience, I do want to bring up, you know, the land use plan was adopted in 2006. The ATLAS was amended to reflect zonings that had been done in conflict with that land use plan between 2006 and 2021, in the summer of 2021. It's obviously, you know, it's time that we be looking into, do we need to update our land use plan? Now, while I think that there was valid reasoning for the land use direction we've got here, we are in the middle of an update of our land use plan, and that, there's an opportunity right now for anybody that's either here or listening to the broadcast on our public access to kind of look into some of the progress that's been made to date in terms of collecting data and information about existing status of Wilson County as a whole in terms of population and everything, and also projections of population and jobs and development pattern trends. And that's at, I just lost it. It's at planwilson.org, www.planwilson.org. You can go there, you can look at the presentations. There's also a QR code-based survey that you can provide input if you wish. So we are in the process of ramping up and trying to get that land use plan looked at and updated at present. So that's for everybody's benefit, regardless of whether it's about this case or another.
We have any further questions from our board?
Public to the, to the public service address.
Sorry. That's okay.
I don't see how these folks can do anything else with this property but what's going on here right now. And I, you know, I'm gonna make a motion that...
I have some comments before he does.
Second.
You ask, and I'm... I did ask, absolutely. Mr. Remfro.
Questions and comments based off my colleague's comments, and I agree with Sheriff, it is a common sense thing, but it was caused by us. When you put hydrovac in, and they had the issues, and I say, you, us, and maybe you're not on the board then, but it's us, we caused this. And we're gonna continue to cause this by a comment of my other colleague, and, which was not quite correct. South of there, it's all residential, and houses are being built right after left from that intersection we're talking about, past the park on down. So it's not all commercial, and it's not all industrial. So there are still residential and agricultural down. Land use plans were developed for a reason, and when we make a vote like this, our board caused this. So now that it is what it is, where do you go? You try to take care of the person that can't sell their land for residential straight? Or do we look at our land use plans and say, just like Tom suggested, we gotta make a change? We need to make a change and get it laid out for the next 10 years, 15, if we can. I know that things are dynamic, but it's hard to support this when you're standing on both sides of the fence with one leg on one side, one on the other, and you say, yep, we're gonna change this for these people, but what do we do for this one over here? So it's just hard. I'm saying that for the community and for the board. That's it, Mr. Chairman, I'm...
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's where we're at.
This is, if I would, this is all caused by growth. It's all caused by growth. We didn't ask for a lot of this growth, it comes to us. These folks have got to be put somewhere. We unfortunately have the task of dealing with that. And I agree with my colleague over there, it will take a good, well-thought-out master plan, land use master plan, of which the one we have is not. It is not. And unfortunately, 231, 70, 840, 109, and 70 even toward Water Town, are all corridors that are in demand for commercial and industrial development. There are portions of 231 that are residential, but much of 231 is not residential. So you're caught here a little bit in this sort of thing. A land use plan will work that out, but you've got to realize when we do have a land use plan, we've got to make a decision of where are we gonna put development like this? Where? And it's not going to be pleasant, whatever our decision is, no one's gonna like it completely. We've got to make a plan that takes care of that. You've got to make a plan that says, okay, commercial goes here, but no houses from now on. They go somewhere else. That's what we're dealing with here.
Counterpoint to that, sir, and again, respectfully, and that is, if you've ever, I live down there, so if you ever come up that way during business hours and work, we're gonna put more industry in these two properties, is what we're speculating here. You can't get through now when a dump truck pulls in, when four pull out in a row. So that's eventually gonna have to build a bypass, because people coming from Murphy's Borough up here to eventually work or to get on I-40 or whatever they're doing, you're backed up past 230, almost down to 452. So it's ridiculous already. So this highway, this infrastructure, anybody that lives out there can speak to this, can't support what we're planning to do right now.
Where are you gonna put the development?
We're already out on I-840.
Where are we gonna put the development?
I think I-840 and 452 are a great place. So, anyway.
All right. Thank you. You want to repeat your, you want to repeat your motion, Chair?
I think we just need to approve this. We've been working on our land use plan, guys.
Three years.
Since I've been up here.
Been three years.
It's hard.
In the interest of being accurate, we started the land use plan update three years ago. It was, it was...
I'll take the last several years off.
It was intersected, it was intersected with a growth plan request.
We still don't have it.
We don't.
We don't have it till next year.
No.
But I expect these folks and some other folks sitting here to wait three years, we decide to make our mind up.
Understood.
So that's the reason for this. I know that property out there, I know there's nobody in their right mind, I don't think, would build a house on this.
Understood.
And I know what the soils are like out there.
Farm land.
I mean, I just live across the hill, and my farm, this is rocky as anybody else's I know.
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna stand by my motion to approve this.
Yes, sir.
And I guess we'll have to forward it to county commission for the final approval.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion for Mr. Ash to approve the rezoning, but a second by Mr. Jewell.
One comment. I know the favorite, I know Lyndon. I would hope everybody does the right thing as it relates to that access road to Old Murphy's Borough Road East.
I love Lyndon LaFever.
Yeah, well, he's got, he's invested, he's got a business out there, too.
Yeah, that's what he's...
So let's everybody try and make sure that they get their needs taken care of.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have two no's, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 yeses. That motion will pass by a motion of eight to two.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Now we have the other rezoning request, Tom?
I'll let the room empty with your permission. A1 agricultural district to C3 highway commercial zoning, referenced is Wilson County Property Map 61 parcel 2, containing 3.6 acres, and Wilson County Property Map 61 parcel 2.01, containing 1.1 acres. The property contains approximately 4.7 acres in all, proposed to be rezoned. The Wilson County Growth Plan nor the Wilson County Land Use Plan has any direction for this area to be commercial. The properties to the south were zoned C3 highway commercial several years ago. The property in this portion of the county is predominantly A1 agriculturally zoned and consists of low-density residential and agricultural development patterns. Should the county planning commission or the county commission ultimately decide to approve this request for rezoning, a site plan would be required at any time that the property is proposed for redevelopment or addition under the commercial zoning that would be in place, and all commercial zoning requirements including permitting, paving, landscaping, building material, and public sewer provisions would apply to the property unless variances are granted. Staff has made copies of the rezoning request available to emergency services and have been given no feedback regarding the rezoning. Staff will note that the proposed zoning, rezoning falls within the limits of the, that's wrong. It's actually the Carthage Highway WEMA station and their five-mile ISO response zone. I just missed that in constructing this rezoning request. The county stormwater department has requested that the applicant, planning commission, and other interested parties be put on notice that the presence of sinkholes, caves, and wetlands, streams, and land areas that are extremely flat marsh or steep may affect further development. As an additional point of information, this rezoning does not appear to be in close or immediate proximity to a century farm, based on information provided to our planning department at this time. With all of the above stated, staff can recommend approval of rezoning from map 61 parcel 2.01 based upon the longstanding and pre-existing commercial use of this parcel as an establishment that is locally referred to as Cooksey's Market. So this is the location of, if you look on the aerial, that's Cooksey's Market, it's the building with the driveway in front of it. Staff cannot recommend rezoning of the remaining 3.6 acres that have historically been used for residential purposes unless the applicant can provide additional reasoning as to why this additional acreage will be needed to operate the longstanding market on the neighboring tract, which is also a part of this request, or can otherwise explain the need to rezone the remaining 3.6-acre tract commercially in the context of redevelopment or addition to the satisfaction of the planning commission and county commission. Staff will point out that there have been similar requests in the general area that the planning commission and county commission have chosen to approve, setting a precedent for these types of requests.
Just sitting here trying to think, Tom. What else out there is zoned commercial?
Right off the bat, I think there's some things back to the west that's coming out of the city of Lebanon that is commercial, and then there may be a couple of small commercial spots that are out there...
Are in the county.
That are in the county. Going east, there's a, I think this is east, there's a, an old hotel that's been used residentially at this point, and then further out, there's Key Stop Market, which is a good bit west, but, and oddly enough, I think you're gonna see a request out in that proximity next month.
Okay. All right. Who do we have here to represent this case today? Mr. Keith?
Brian Keith, KNA Land Surveying. The request before you, a portion of this property is an existing store that a lot of folks around here know as Cooksey's Store. That property's been commercial for, been commercial use for a long time. It's not zoned commercial, but it's been used that way. The additional property that we're asking for rezoning is also under consolidation plat as we speak, to be combined. Those are two separate tracts, legal tracts. We're combining those as one, and the reason for that is Cooksey's Market is an older store that needs possibly some upgrades, remodeling, additions, that sort of thing. By adding additional... By adding additional property to the, uh, existing commercial use property now, they would have that option to do that. The, uh, the owners of the property, uh, that were asking to be rezoned also own the adjoining property behind it. So, um, they're wanting to cut out that, that corner because adding a portion of that lot to the west, or to the north, no, to the west, I'm sorry.
You need a laser pointer?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Um, adding a portion of the, of that lot to the west, um, would leave a strip of land that would be useless, really. So they just want to cut that whole corner out. So we're asking to rezone actu- actually both tracks as they stand today, but we are, um, we do have a consolidation plat, um, with the planning office right now to combine those two tracks. So we, so we would ask that, that both tracks be rezoned to C1.
May I ask? Yes, sir. Speaker something. Brian, is, is it true that this house is the longstanding residence of the owners of Cooksey's Market?
No, they don't, they don't live there.
They do not live there?
No, they live on the adjoining property.
I was thinking, for some reason, that's sort of the caretaker's-
Yeah, let me, let me address that too.
Okay.
The existing residential house that you see there now will be removed. So the only structure on the consolidated plat when we're done will be Cooksey's Market, a commercial building.
And it sounds to me like, from what, what you're saying, that the long-term intention is probably to increase the size of that store.
Yes, sir, at least have the options to do so, moving forward.
In your robe for an inch.
And, and as you can see, the, the store is very cramped on the lot that was created for it sometime way back. Um, there's not a lot of room, one, for building nor parking. And with today's, um, commercial standards, that would be, it had to be adhered to through a site plan of, of any future development, they would need much more room to accommodate that.
I assume it's on septic now, Brian?
It is.
An independent septic from the house you're asking?
Yes.
Okay. Both tracks have their own system? Okay, alright, thank you, sir. Anyone here, anyone else here wish to speak on this case today? Do we have any questions from our board?
I have one from Mr. Brian.
This weekend, I don't see how in the world they get into parking in there. About the very few places you find fuel anywhere, anything else, that needs to be done.
I have a question from Mr. Brian. It may have been a Freudian slip, but you said C1, but you're asking for C3. The document says C3, yes or no?
It says C1.
C1, A1 to C1. You may, you may be reading the top one where you just-
My comments inaccurately said C3, it's C1.
It is C1, not C3.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't see your particular comments, I only get, I only get a, a light version.
I happen to hear about everything.
I do have one other question with Tom. So the far west, A1, borders up to them, which is rocks and trees and-
Right here?
Yeah, so, how big a track is that?
It's a larger track. Um, my, to my recollection, I can't see it on the map, obviously, but. You mean, not their track, the adjoining track?
The adjoining track west, what I was, because they certainly have everything else around it, so I mean, I just wondered about that track. Nobody here from that track.
Question for Tom as well, sir.
Yes, sir.
Tom, after hearing the explanation and the reason why-
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have any, uh, I think he's justified, given you a reasonable justification why they need the additional land.
And so you're-
And with the, with the understanding, I wasn't aware he was gonna be doing a consolidation plat either, so.
Okay.
I, I can recommend approval of the whole, overall thing, given the precedence is there.
It's 256 acres on the other side.
Thank you. Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Move and approve.
Second. We have a motion from Mr. Jewell to approve, a second by Mr. Ash.
Subject to staff recommendations, just to make that-
Yes, sir. Uh, all those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry and be forwarded to the County Commission. Thank you. Uh, we're now ready for site plans and plaits, Tom?
Mr. Chairman, the site plan for, the first item we have is a site plan for Aldi Warehouse Parking Expansion. Um, this is, uh, the existing Aldi Building Warehouse at the end of Aldi Boulevard, uh, off of Couchville Pike and 840, uh, on the west side. It's, uh, 2080 Aldi Boulevard, Map 140 Parcel 7, with technical corrections and updated landscaping plan. Staff can recommend approval.
Okay. Anyone here representing this case today? Mr. Addicks?
Morning, Joe Addicks, STG. Appreciate your time. This is just a minor parking lot expansion at the front of their building. Give them a little bit of extra parking already there. Stormwater infrastructure's already in place, so.
And when I was talking about the updated landscaping plan with their parking expansion, they're removing some of the required, initially required landscaping for the original parking lot, and I was just asking them basically to re, to replace that, remove-
Good with all staff comments and conditions. I can answer any questions y'all may have.
Anyone else wish to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board?
All the parking will meet requirements for square footage, et cetera. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All those in, I'm sorry, any questions from our board? Any other questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, based on staff recommendations.
We have a motion by Ms. Weathers to approve. Contention on staff recommendations, a second by Mr. Renfro. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Ready for the site plan for the Wilson Business Center?
Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a site plan for Wilson Business Center at 2241 and 2525 Lone Oak Road. You may recall, this was the subject of a longstanding rezoning request, or series of rezoning requests, that were, was ultimately successful in rezoning the property. With technical corrections and the submittal of wetland delineation and endangered species study, staff can recommend approval.
Tom, the track that is, it's got, you have two addresses here, the track that is cut out, uh, that's an ill property?
That's also part of it.
It's all part of one?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the other address, I believe.
Okay.
Well, that's just a 911 address.
No, there's a house there, but they bought it.
I've lived in that house, but they-
And got it rezoned.
So.
Put it back together.
Okay. Anyone here to represent this case today?
Guess what?
Mr. Addicks?
Morning again, Joe Addicks, STG. Uh, so thanks to staff for working with us on this one. We're in agreement with all staff comments and conditions. We've double-checked all of the requirements as part of the, the long process with the rezoning have been included, uh, specifically for this board to hear me say, we're detaining for the 100-year storm.
My next question?
Right. Um, there's a large drainage basin coming from the north that we're actually routing through our detention pond system, uh, which should slow down all the water coming to the south end, so.
Not gonna run through that curve when we get done, correct?
There's still some that goes through there, but it's, it's coming out very, very slow. Um, one item to note, we are also doing some widening at the intersection of Couchville and Lone Oak to create a separate left and right turn lanes, um, and do some minor signal modification improvements there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's important to note also that at the top of our comments, overall comments, it says that, that everybody must comply with stormwater engineering, WEMA, Fire Marshal, and Utility District comments. Um, those, some of those are still in progress with the Utility District, I believe. Um, I know Fire Marshal Cowan came to see me yesterday and had a couple of discussions about the way in which, uh, turnarounds at the ends of the parking on either side of the building was to be constructed, and I believe he's talked with Joe about that, and as Joe has stated, he's in agreement with all comments, so.
You're at peace with that, Mr. Cowan? Anyone else wish to speak on this case? Any questions from our board? We have a motion?
Motion.
A motion to approve, Mr. Jewell.
Staff recommendations.
Subject to staff recommendations. A second by Mr. Thompson. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Thank you, sir. Ready for the Alden D. Meyer final, Tom?
Yes, um, if you don't mind Julie Ford to the, this is on the lake.
This is what we had last month. Yes, sir.
Yes, and, uh, the plat meets planning requirements and staff can recommend approval. This is at Gamble Cove and Tubbs Road, uh, Map 12 Parcel 7.01, and at this point, it consists of three lots.
Was it four lots last month?
It was.
You did.
You did, we say, man, it was three, you made it.
So they don't have a loop sewer in there anymore?
That makes you dizzy looking at that. Good lord.
You wanna tell us about it, Mr. Keith?
Been asleep, probably.
Okay, so you guys will remember this from, as a preliminary, last month. We have brought this forward as a final this month. Um, we have removed one of the, one of the, uh, uh, the lots that we had last month and, and now turned this into a three-lot subdivision. Um, it still has some odd-shaped lots, but I'm here to testify, this is, is, this is very good. For this, for this shape, for this, for this shape of property, this is very good.
I like you to brag.
I'm going to today, I don't usually do that.
Alright. Mr. Keith?
If you guys have any, yes.
I will point out, it is a beautiful piece of property, so.
It is. And so that, and that's the whole purpose behind this, is utilize that pretty piece of property, it's just a difficult shape of property.
Right.
And sometimes we run into this, and we, um, we attempted the four lots, uh, we did, we did make four lots that were, um, that, that followed the subdivision regulations. But in hindsight, the owners and myself, um, came back with a three-lot proposal that I think you guys would like much better, and it's gonna work for them, and they'll get to utilize this property, um, that, that is, it is very, very pretty.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? I'm sorry?
Was the lot that you, uh, did away with part of that long one on the left side of the?
So if you remember, because of the location of the soils areas for the septic, in order to access those with limited road frontage, um, I had to create a 10-foot strip of land around the entire property to access that most southerly soils area that you're looking at. Uh, by removing that one lot, which, that lot would have been the northeast corner lot, I still have a, I still have a lot there, but I, I'm utilizing a different soils area for it. That allowed me to change the lot lines and, and make, and, and create a different, different shape of subdivision lots.
Took a thousand-piece puzzle, made a 500-piece puzzle out of it, and now we're good with it.
I, I, I do, I do think that it looks much better, um, and I think it'll, it'll even work better, so.
Probably got much better building boxes too, don't you?
Larger, larger areas to build in, yes.
Alright, thank you, sir. Do we have anyone else wish to speak on this case today? Any questions from our board?
No, sir.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Ms. Weathers, second by Mr. Ash. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion will carry. Uh, we have the plaits for affirmation, Tom?
Yes, sir, I have a re-subdivision of the Eddie and Judy McCrery property, uh, consisting of two lots located at 2006 Flatwood Road, Flatwoods Road, and references Map 136 Parcel 39.17 at present. Uh, consolidation, and also a consolidation of the Mary Sue Harris property, which is two lots on Carthage Highway, I believe that's the reference consolidation plat, um, that my staff's been reviewing, map, uh, can, uh, references Map 61 Parcel 2 and 2.01.
Okay. Anyone here wish to speak on either of these cases today? Any questions from our board? Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, Mr. Ash, second by Mr. Jewell, all those in favor, vote aye. Thank you. We will now move into the election of the officers for the coming year.
Public comment? You wanna do the public comment?
I will in a minute.
Okay.
We're still in session.
Okay, election commission, all right, excuse me, election of officers, apologize.
Mr. Chairman, what, what officers are we talking about?
Chairman, Vice Chairman, and-
Secretary.
I think Mayor Hutto is by his position automatically secretary, is that correct?
I don't know that it's automatically, but that is traditionally in Wilson County been the case.
But I haven't heard any complaints.
Louis, Vice Chairman is, is, yes, that's right.
Ms. Weathers?
I move, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve, uh, by acclamation our present lineup of officers.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to, uh, keep the existing, uh, officers in place for the coming year, uh, and we have a second-
Acclamation.
By acclamation, and we have a second from Mr. Ash, is that correct, sir? Did me. All those in favor, vote aye. Those opposed? That motion, that will carry, and we will now-
Swear amen.
We have public comments.
We'll get done. Uh, we will open the floor for public comments. State law requires us to have a public comment period, uh, during our meetings, and, and to talk about whatever y'all wanna talk to us about. If anyone wants to take advantage of that, now's your time. See, done, uh, we will close that portion. Oh, can I close? I'm leaving before you, for instance. Okay, uh, Mayor Hutto needs to swear, uh, swear the officers in.
Well, if you would stand up and, uh, repeat after me, that's what I'm gonna do. Miss, uh, you can, Miss Georgia, Miss George once said I gotta do this, don't give me that hard work.
Raise your hand up, too.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me.
Can I swear you in?
Aye. Oh, who's gonna start me again? Aye, say your name.
Aye, Jean Jones.
Aye, Diane Weathers.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
They saw recently.
And I will perform.
And I will perform.
I'll bow down.
I'll bow down.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Which I've been elected.
Which I've been elected.
And which I'm about to assume.
And which I'm about to assume.
I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
To support the Constitution.
To support the Constitution.
Of Tennessee.
Of Tennessee.
And the United States.
And the United States.
And to faithfully perform.
And to faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
And the Wisconsin County Planning Commission.
I will, we gave my permission.
We're gonna be done.
We did.
You'll sign these. Miss Georgia?
You're impressed?
Diane, you're supposed to live by that old-
I'll tell you a story when he cuts the camera off.